Thank you for being here. At this time, we're going to take out of number fifteen out of order. The board will convene into closed session. We're showing Texas Government Code five-five-one-oh-seven-four, five-five-one-oh-seven-one, and five-five-one-oh-seven-two. A voting will take place in closed session. Any action by the board that will take place back in regular open session later this evening. Thank you will now be dismissed. Well, good evening. This is the project with tonight. We're going to call this meeting back into open session at this time. If you would all rise, I'd like to ask Dr. Helen O'Neal to leave us any invitation to see.
Hello, spring. Helen, if I would be thank you for such a wonderful time to be together to address the issues relating to our community. Father, we thank you for the dedication tonight. He has to be president of our midst and help us in all our decision making. Father, we pray for all our children in this district as they take some time off to just relax and enjoy the summer. I pray that they'll be safe wherever they are. I pray all that to keep them all together, safe, returning back to us when school starts. Father, I also pray for our teachers, that you be with them as they take time to unwind and just recharge. I ask for that you would help them to get rejuvenated and ready to get back to work once school resumes. Father, we're grateful for this community, everyone that plays a role in, especially in the school district. Father, we wish you good luck in your state.
We're ready to step and let's put our pledges together. Our pledge to the citizens of the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, with a visible liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas where we stand and our one and the strong. So glad you're all coming early so you've kind of parked a place and a seat in here from the crowd who were expecting to that. So glad our guests are all here. I think we do have a special recognition. First, we'll call Ms. Kristen Zestful, who's the microphone executive director of communications. Introduce her guest tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Good evening, Board of Trustees. It is my honor this evening to introduce the Education Service Center's Region Ten Deputy Executive Director, Dr. Jana Melshiner, to present a very special award this evening.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here. It is my pleasure and honor to announce this Region Ten Superintendent of the Year is Dr. Justin Terry. As you all know, one of Dr. Terry's most notable achievements is his unwavering commitment to building strong relationships. This commitment is brilliantly showcased in the creation of Opportunity Central, a visionary project that brings together the forty family. Opportunity Central is not just a building, it's a testament to how education and community can seamlessly integrate to provide enriching opportunities for everyone. It is a hub for learning, engagement, and growth. Reflecting Dr. Terry's belief that education extends beyond the classroom. Furthermore, Dr. Terry is a champion for public education, advocating timelessly and tirelessly at the local and state levels. He is recognized as a voice of reason and passion influencing educational policies and initiatives that benefit students and educators alike. As a visionary leader, Dr. Terry is dedicated to developing leaders. He believes in empowering staff with professional development opportunities and fostering a culture of improvement, then going above and beyond to share that framework for innovative solutions with other educators and leaders to help address critical issues such as teacher shortage. His leadership extends to students as well, providing them with real-life opportunities and experiences through innovative programs such as IRL, which offers students practical hands-on experiences that prepare them for future success. Congratulations, Dr. Terry, on being named Region Ten Superintendent of the Year. Your work has a profound impact, not only on your community, but also on our region and across the state. We look forward to many more years of your inspiring leadership. Congratulations.
At this time, too, I believe you'd like the board to join us for a photo when they have this special winner. He will receive his official crystal award at the Teacher of the Year banquet in July.
Well, it's great to know that others recognize the greatness we already have. So congratulations again for all your leadership and everything you've done. We're going to continue this celebration all the way to the past. Now, moving on into our next item, issued certificates of election for new elected board members. So at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Spengler and Dr. O'Neal, if you would please make your way down to the front. And Ms. Elsie, you would join them.
Do you solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
Or then I will thankfully execute.
I will thankfully execute.
Do you need to have the office?
Do you need to have the office?
Or the office?
Or the office?
Of the state of Texas.
Of Texas.
And will due to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Pretty much. Glad most of you both, and we're starting with you again. Next, I'm moving on to item number seven. At this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Dr. Terry for reorganization of the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. This is the one time of year where I get to take the mic for the board meeting, and that is for the reorganization of our Board of Trustees. So at this time, we will now take item number six, reorganization of the board. Do I have any nominations for board officers?
Mr. Terry, I'd like to nominate Greg Ferris for board president, Chad Johnson for vice president, and Becky Dobbs as secretary.
Sir.
Thank you, and I have a motion from this statement for Greg Ferris as president, Vice President Chad Johnson, and Becky Dobbs as secretary. And that was seconded, I believe, by John Riki. John Riki. I will now call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion carries. Congratulations to our newly elected officers. And Mr. President, I will now give the mic. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to the confidence in us and in electing us, and we will do our best to serve you going forward. Let's move on then. Firstly, we will, I don't think we need a recess on item number eight. We're going to skip recess. And then we'll move on to item number nine. Public hearings discussed for codes twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Mr. Chase, Chief Financial Officer, you can release.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. By way of introduction, I just kind of muted.
You have a motion to call this public hearing to order.
Self move.
Ms. Dobbs, have a second.
Second.
Ms. Burkhoff, next, you can go ahead, Mr..
Sorry about that. But just by way of introduction, we began the budget development process in December, January timeframe. At that time, we started working on staffing plans for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We worked with our demographic to determine our student enrollment at each campus. And from there, we used our staffing formula to determine the number of teachers, aides, and other campus staff that we needed to operate our facilities. Administration began to present the staffing plan to the board in February, and the board approved that at that time. And then in April, we had our budget workshop, and we outlined our pay raises, plans, and other funding priorities. The pay raise plan was approved immediately after the budget workshop at our regular scheduled board meeting in April, which brings us to tonight to discuss our final budget and our proposed tax rate. And just to begin with, our budget document was given to you, the comprehensive budget last Thursday, last Thursday, I believe. It has four sections. I think the board's pretty well familiar with this at this point. We presented this format for the last ten years. The first section there, the introductory section, is basically the executive summary of the entire documents by fifteen pages. That gives you a pretty good summary of everything that was included in the budget document. The second section is the organization section, which included information about how we're structured leadership-wise, our accounting information and processes that we use. The state prescribed the accounting number of structure that we use in our school system, our budget policy, and our budget development process. Then we get to the financial section, and that included our estimates of revenue appropriations for the twenty-five-year interest, the funds that the board's required to adopt. There's comparative data there for about five years of information that you can look in and get a pretty good idea of what our districts and our operations over the last five years. And then finally, the information section included more information about property values, tax rates, tax collections, student enrollment, staffing levels. So that was the comprehensive budget, the budget basically as a summary. But just to start off with, to dig a little deeper into the budget process, you know, we always begin with our enrollment estimate that determines the number of teachers that we need, the amount of state aid that we're going to receive. We use it for facility planning. We often, you know, the board's aware that we work with the demographic, and this next year, he's projecting a nine-hundred student increase, and that's about a five-point-three percent change from this year. Just to illustrate that graphically, starting in October of two thousand twenty, we had eleven thousand nine hundred seventy-seven students. In October twenty-three, we had seventeen thousand and three students, which is about a five-thousand student change. Now, projecting that forward over the next five years, we're looking at twenty-three thousand one hundred sixty students, which is another six thousand is what the projection is at this point. The other important piece of the budget puzzle is property values. It determines our local share of our state funding formula. It also determines the amount of debt service that we can fund from year to year. And we're expecting a property value increase of twelve-point-six percent. We got a preliminary estimate of values in April, and I think it was seventeen-point-one or two percent at that point. We always lose about three or four percent during the protest period, so that's what we've got our, you know, our budget developed on twelve-point-six. We'll get our final certified values in July, and if it's much different than that, you know, we'll come back and amend the budget accordingly. But right now, we feel like that's a pretty good estimate. Just looking at our property values over the last five years, just on the market value side of things, we had six-point-seven billion or so in two thousand twenty market value. Fast forward to today, we're at thirteen-point-seven billion. It's about a seven-billion-dollar increase in the last five years. It's a little over a hundred percent change. And when you look at that on a taxable value basis, we've gone from five-point-five billion, a taxable value of ten-point-four billion, and that's about ninety percent change or so. The last couple of years, we've lost a lot of value through the exemptions of, primarily through increasing our home state exemption from forty thousand to a hundred thousand, that state made that home state exemption that went into effect last year. Most of our value begins in the single-family or residential area. That's the biggest majority of our value, and then commercial values next. We have some smaller values in those other categories, but ninety percent of our values in health care categories. Just to start out with on the combined budget, we kind of use a pyramid approach on our budget development process or in our presentation. You know, we have our combined budget, which includes the debt service, food service, and a general fund together. Estimated revenues are two-two-hundred-and-seventy-one-point-nine million. Appropriations are two-hundred-and-sixty-six-point-six million. And just kind of how that shakes out within each individual fund. The general fund is two-hundred-and-three-point-six million dollars, and that's seventy-six percent of the overall budgets. You know, our largest funds where we have most of our activity. The debt service fund is fifty-three-point-three million, or twenty percent of the overall combined budget. And then finally, the food service budget, which is nine-point-eight million, or four percent of the overall budget. Just again, just kind of drilling down into each individual fund, on the general fund, again, it is the largest fund. Majority of the revenues in this fund is property taxes and state aid. That's no surprise, it's ninety-seven percent of the overall budget. As far as estimated revenues on the appropriations side, eighty-three percent of that budget's payroll. And if you drill in some of the assumptions that we use to estimate our revenues and our expenditures, just starting off with on state aid, that's the primary driver in our funding formula. Sixty-one-sixty is what the basic requirement is, and I would add that that number's been sixty-one-sixty for going on six years now, and hasn't changed over that period of time. We know that inflation during that time period's been pretty significant, which is why we had a tax rate election this last year. And the second part of the funding formula, the enrichment side of the equation, there's two levels of guarantee. The guaranteed yield on the first eight cents, our enrichment tax rate is at a hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars next year, and the second nine pennies is at forty-nine dollars. And so, again, we have a tax rate election, and we have access to the maximum amount of funding that we could. I point out that most districts, if they haven't had a tax rate election last year, probably had one, and if they didn't have one last year, they're probably planning on having one this year. So just, I think the board probably is aware of that, and just know that, I know there's some districts in the area that are planning on right now. So anyway, as far as enrollment, again, we've talked about this, we're looking at seventeen thousand nine hundred kids. That's what we're projecting this fall. And again, our property value estimate is at twelve-point-six percent. We normally estimate tax collections at a hundred percent. I backed that off to ninety-nine and a half this year because we're not seeing as much ag rollback tax collections as we have in past years. I imagine a lot of the value that has been, had ag exemptions on that, a lot of that's getting changed over to either commercial or residential property at this point. So they go back and they revalue that property. We had discussions about this periodically, but we get tax collections on the last five years when they go back and revalue that property that way. And so that's what's caused in the last few years for our closures to be over a hundred percent. But I don't think that's going to be the case moving forward. It's more normal for tax collections to be around ninety-nine, ninety-nine and a half to ninety-nine-point-seven percent, and that's what I feel like we'll probably see moving forward. As far as our tax rate goes, we're looking at a dollar twenty-eight sixty-nine, which is point-two-three cents lower than what it is currently. I mean, it's basically the same, but that's where we sit right now. And I fully expect when we get our maximum refresh rate, that'll be calculated by the state in the first of August, that's what our tax rate on our NNO side will be. And I mean, I expect that our INS tax rate will stay at fifty cents, but that's how it shakes out currently. As far as our overall general fund revenues, we, again, we're at two-two-hundred-and-three-point-six million dollars. And again, that's about a ten, ten-and-a-half million-dollar change, or five-point-four percent. We get forty-three percent of our revenues from the local sources, again, primarily from property tax collections. Fifty-six comes, percent comes from state aid, and the final one percent is federal revenues through Medicaid reimbursements and indirect cost reimbursements to the general fund and the food service program. On the expense side of the equation in the general fund, we approved an, on average, features received a two-point-three percent increase, excuse me, a three-point-two percent increase in pay. The rest of the staff were pretty much received a three percent increase from the midpoint of their respective pay grades. Right now, we're not bringing to you a recommendation for employee retention stop, because we want to see what our actual enrollment will be this fall before we bring a recommendation forward on that. Just want to make sure that we're going to get our enrollments before we make our final decision. So probably sometime in October or September, October timeframe, we'll come back and have a discussion about that. The staffing increases, again, we had one-hundred-and-sixty-nine new positions in the budget, and in our non-pay, our non-payroll staff allocation, or campus allocations based on the number of students they have enrolled is one-hundred-and-eighty-nine, eighty-one, or seventy-five, depending on what the current configuration that the campus is in. We also included about a half-million dollars in maintenance contingencies, and, you know, at this time of the year, we never really know what to expect. You know, we could have air conditioning units that tear up, we could have, you know, a partial blow-off because of a hurricane that we weren't expecting to have in our district and things of that nature. So we have some maintenance contingency funds set aside for unforeseen things of that nature. We've got some security upgrade money at two-two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for upgrades to, you know, cameras or any other security upgrades that we might need to make throughout the year. There's six school buses that we've already received approval from the board for purchase, and the purchase orders have been issued on that. The buses won't actually come until this next fiscal year, but there's seven, over seven-hundred thousand dedicated for that. Maintenance tax notes and energy upgrade, no payments that we've done on these prior projects. It's one-point-two million dollars for that, and we'll continue making those payments all the way through the twenty-third, and we'll have those finally paid off. And then student technology, we purchased this year about eleven thousand or so, that there's a refresh, several of our devices that are in the students' hands right now. This next year, we're not expecting to make that big a purchase. We have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dedicated for replacements for some, either that get broken or new staff, Chromebooks and things of that nature. We also have some money set aside for network upgrades. And then finally, as far as the board's, the board's goal for us to have two months of operating expenses. We always, in our fund balance, we always take a look at that, and our budget is balanced for the next upcoming school year, and we're projecting that we'll have two-point-eight million dollars in operating reserves and fund balance at the end of this fiscal year coming up. And so just looking at the overall budget, again, it's five-point-four percent increase in revenues. It's a, you know, two-hundred-and-three-point-six million, the same on expenditures, it's only a four-point-four percent increase. And the reason for that is, is that we had a budget deficit this year. If you stripped that out, again, we'd have, you know, a five-point-four percent increase on expenses too. But just looking at the budget as it exists now, compared after next year, it's a four-point-four percent increase. And so I pretty much summarized everything here. I won't repeat all of that, other than to say that, you know, we are projecting a fund balance of forty-six-point-three million, which is two-point-eight percent of months of operating expenses at a tax rate of seventy-eight-point-sixty-nine cents. Moving on to food service funds, as a fund title suggests, it accounts for the operations of the district's cafeterias. There's a nine percent increase in the estimated revenues in this fund. Student enrollment and enterprise increases is what's driving that. On the appropriations side, we're looking at one-point-two percent increase. That includes twenty new positions to serve three new campuses, plus a three percent increase in pay to our existing staff. And I think, you know, why isn't our expenditures higher than that? This last year, we had a pretty significant amount in retention pay that was in the food service fund, as well as some capital improvement expenditures that we made. So, you know, that's why there's not as big an increase when you compare one budget year from the next year. But we're looking at eight, eight-point-nine million dollars, which is nine percent increase in overall escalated revenues in this fund. We're looking at nine-point-eight million dollar budget, which is a one-point-two percent increase. We are projecting a slight deficit of nine-hundred thousand. We've got fund balance to cover that. We're hoping that we'll have some, our sales will be a little bit better this next year after having our management company in here for one full year. We also anticipate we'll probably understand our payroll budget a little bit, and this assumes that we'll have one-hundred percent of our positions filled, one-hundred percent of the time all year, and that doesn't typically happen, so we'll probably have some savings there in our payroll costs. But right now, that's what we're projecting in the food service fund. And then last, the debt service fund accounts for the principal and interest-related fees for our bond and debt that we have outstanding. Nine percent of this revenue comes from property taxes and interest income. The remaining ten percent, which just started basically, we were getting a little bit of aid like this in years past, but this last year, we started really getting some significant amount of aid for the home state exemption when it increased from forty thousand to a hundred thousand. So about ten percent of our revenue now that can, in the debt service fund, is projected to be from state aid for that purpose. We're projecting estimated revenues of fifty-nine-point-four million dollars, which is eleven-point-six percent increase in revenues. On the expenses, we're pretty much flat. It's about a hundred thousand down from the prior year at this point, so it's about a point-two percent reduction. Now, that doesn't include funds that we think we're going to, when we actually sell some bonds in August for this Now, that that doesn't include the funds that we think will will when we actually sell some bonds in August for this this upcoming thirty million dollar sale that we're going to have. You know, I didn't have the data for that to to put in the budget yet, so we'll we'll come back and amend the budget in August and that that'll probably add another one one point two million dollars to the budget. And then the the remaining surplus that we'll have there, we'll be bringing to you a plan to call some some call debt and pay it off early like we have in past years. But we're looking at at the end of this fiscal year, as it stands right now, it would be it would be a fund balance of sixty three million. And that's sixty three point two million dollars, our August debt service payment right now is projected to be thirty two point four million, so we have that covered. And that's what the board's stated policy is in the the debt service fund. And again, when you just look at what their overall collections in just this this current fiscal year or the upcoming fiscal year and compare that to what we can spend, when we've already got committed, we still we have about right now, almost five million dollars of surplus. And and again, that will be used for August, the the bonds that we issue in August, getting about one point two million. And then and then the remaining three point seven million or so will be used to retire some some debt early. And we'll bring that plan to you after we get certified values and we know for sure what our tax collections with some pretty good certainty and what what exactly what bonds we we intend to call and present that to you for approval at that time. And that's at a tax rate of fifty cents. But that's that's the pretty much a rundown of our of our budget for two thousand twenty five. If there's any questions at this time, we have an answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chase, your preparation and the package you put together is very professional, we appreciate that as always. Any questions from the board? You got any questions from the public? Why the charity accomplice?
I can make these now or when we take action, but if you'd like, we can go ahead and share this. First off, you know, it's very proud of what John and his team have continued to do in order to start to give you a lot of huge confidence for the way that you continue to manage this budget, it's now a two hundred and eight dollar and a quarter billion dollar overall budget in a very conservative manner that takes care of our kids right from young. I think many of you know and have seen the media that it's it's tough times in education, you know, and you continue to see, you know, twenty, thirty to forty to fifty million dollar deficit budgets that are being presented and adopted just to take care of your staff. So I just wanted to say first off, thank you to John and his team, many of our board, because we are proposing a balanced budget and that's a very rare thing in education today. We also are about to open the doors to three new schools next year, probably twelve new campuses in the last four years with management growth. I couldn't say this before, but we now have capacity to continue to grow and support the growth of this community, we're doing it in a very conservative way. We are market competitive, we are continuing to be market competitive and focus on the people. The board does have to commend you as well for what you've done to make sure that our teachers and our staff and our community and kids are taken care of from that perspective. We're continuing to lower and propose to lower the tax for multiple years in a row now, although it's not as much as years passed, but the tax rate's still been going down. And then finally, I think you saw our reserves and whether it's debt service or whether it's the general fund, safety nets are in place for tough times. And we're presenting to you tonight a balanced budget, very proud of that, but at the same time, you've got reserves and for times that may still be above all in the future. So just wanted to again say thank you, John and his team, a lot of hard work goes into this two hundred page document that he presented, but also to the board for goodness in this position. We can continue to do good work here in the morning, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chase, once again, for you and your staff, appreciate your leadership. It's good to see the fund balance we continue to build up each year, so that's good to have that in place. Any further questions? Do you have a hearing now to have a motion to close this public hearing? Have a motion for this stop to close the public hearing, go to the second? Thank you, Ms. Baker. Public hearing is now closed at seven thirty seven P M. Moving on, Jen, to item number ten, public forum, there was no one signed to speak to that. Moving on to item eleven, consent agenda, eleven A is approved minutes from the May sixth meeting. Eleven B approved minutes from the May fourteen special call meeting. Eleven C approved the budget amendments. Eleven D approved the purchase of Waltrix. Eleven E approved the purchase of additional Evolve. Eleven F approved adjustments to meal pressing. Eleven G approved the C K H annual renewal. Eleven H approved the balance college M O U. Eleven I approved the annual purchases. Eleven J approved designated officers to calculate tax rates. Were we taking action individually or collectively? Do I have a motion on the board?
President Ferris, I make a motion to collectively approve consent agenda, item actor change.
Have a motion, Ms. Regan, to do collectively. Do I have a second?
Second.
Up here, the video, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Regan, thank you very much. Moving on to item twelve, consideration possible approval of the twenty four twenty five budget, Mr. Chase. Anytime, go ahead, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, this is our proposed budget, again, it's a it's adopted at a funded function level. This is presented in the comprehensive budget document that you got and this is this is administrative recommendation that you approve this budget as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Working on the presentation, I have a presentation for administration, do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the twenty twenty four twenty twenty five budget as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Baker, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I hear that? Then on to number thirteen, consideration approval of the twenty four twenty five employee compensation plan, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris, you were presented with the the compensation plan for the upcoming school year. Basically, the the paper ranges, most of them have been adjusted to two percent. There were some rolling changes and some others that were removed, there were actually our substitute pay increased between five and ten dollars depend on the level of certification. And we had a few stoppings that we that we had or changed, but that's the the compensation plan that you have before you and it's our administrative recommendation, if you approve it as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Do I have a motion on the second? Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approves the twenty twenty four twenty five employee compensation plan as presented. Thank you, have a motion, Dr. Ed, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Baker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Regan. And on to the fourth, consideration for possible approval, tasking policy update one twenty three, that's a first read, Mr. Here, Chief of Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Ferris, looking at budget and policy all at one time right now, so excited. So I'm here to present as a first reading local policy update one twenty three. This addresses several remaining laws from the A D A legislative session. Other revisions included in this update are responses to changes in the administrative code. Very first one is B B D local, House Bill three zero three three. Authorize the Attorney General to require trustees to complete training on the Public Information Act if the Attorney General finds that there is a violation of the Act of the District. Language is recommended to make very clear that this training after a violation cannot be delegated to the District's Public Information Act Boardman. B B F A, language is recommended to clarify that trustees' ethical duty to disclose a financial or other personal interest in board transactions goes beyond the statutory confidence, excuse me, statutory confidence of interest set out in state and federal law. Under C K C local, on September the seventh of two thousand twenty three, T E A released what was called model standards to assist districts in developing procedures to notify parents of violent activity that had occurred or was being investigated at a campus or other district facility. New provisions in C K C local direct the superintendent to develop procedures that provide for these notifications. For addressing one policy, all security arrangements a district may have implemented, T A S B has added C K E local and has moved all the relevant relevant provisions out of C K E A local and have deleted that policy. What happened with C K E now contains all the provisions for us also having our security officers as well. So all that's been combined into one policy now. And as a result, C K E has been deleted. C Q C, this new local policy is recommended to meet the legal requirement for the board to adopt a policy for the effective integration of digital devices in the district. The policy language adopts a model health and safety guideline developed by T E A and the Health and Human Services Commission. Some changes in D C E local recommendations are intended to clarify that now a non chapter twenty one contract employee can request a hearing with the board under contract or if their contract is terminated during the contract term. Before, the only recourse a non chapter twenty twenty one employee, contract employee had was that of the field procedure. Under D E C local, recommendation were intended, excuse me, under D E C local, revision recommended to add required provisions for police and peace officers regarding mental health league, quarantine league, and the Latin Duke illness or injury league. We actually have to note back in September, excuse me, in January of two thousand twenty three, our district adopted this. It's been over a year ago, we'd already made those provisions, they now include this in the package of update one twenty three. I group all of D G B A and F N G and G F as these are all of our public complaints, parent complaints or employee complaint process. The changes in this policy with the current structure, because of C K E series, including that of the complaint policies for security officers and police officers, all of this has now been driven into series instead of specific codes because all these items, D I A is going through some changes, F F H is going through some changes, so now they're record series instead of local code directory. T E A made some revisions in the student attendance accounting handbook, also known as the S A L, prompted recommended updates to this policy. Students may now receive homebound services for psychological as well as medical conditions. The S A L also indicated that the weeks of confinement due to these medical or psychological condition do not need to be consecutive as they have been in the past for qualify. The policy language has been updated now to reflect this change. Under the E F local series, E F has actually been deleted. It actually included provisions for instructional resources and library material as well. So it's now been split, E F A local now adjusts text regarding selection items from the list adopted by the School Board of Education and reporting and regarding who can make correct, excuse me, reconsideration requests. So E F D local now specifically aligns with library material and E F A local is with instructional resources. That ends my presentation for the first reading, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain this.
Thank you, Mr. Here, do I have questions from the board? Do you appreciate that exciting update? You're welcome, Nita. Mrs. Elsie, if you would please move to consent agenda next month, please, thank you very much. Moving on to item fifteen, consideration for possible approval for the twenty twenty four tasking delegate alternate selection. This time, I might make a recommendation that this patent service are delegate, Mr. Regan, if you all change. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion to approve, motion the board approve the twenty twenty four tasking delegate alternate selection as presented.
Do you accept that, yes, okay.
I guess.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, all three. Mr. Regan, should keep her healthy, you don't have to do anything. Yes, sir. Mr. Ferris, I remind everybody to do that, Ms. Baker actually brought home a thousand dollars scholarship as well. Yes, we're looking for double the money this time.
I see, I can do.
Yeah. And then next is closed session, we had that took that earlier, have word, the results from our closed session, we're looking on item seventeen, consideration for possible approval, ratification of employment of professional contract personnel to have motion.
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the ratification of employment of professional contract personnel as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, all three, do I have a second?
Second.
Next stop, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Regan. Mr. Cherry, I'll try to review for announcements, I guess, any changes there on the states you need to address.
No, sir, just one, a couple of few complications, it's on a Friday this year, just because we've got some of this on our calendar. So we'll mark the calendar for the Friday morning as well. We went ahead and included, as T A S B mentioned, in San Antonio, for those who are attending, it is in San Antonio this year. So why don't we go ahead and get those dates on your calendar as well? Make sure.
Last weekend.
September the twenty seventh to twenty ninth, September twenty seventh to twenty ninth, so I believe that's right, so.
September ninth today is not correct.
I think that's just on, so, yeah. So twenty seventh to the twenty ninth should be a great date there, so just my part of the calendar coming in. Other than that, it did not.
Anything else for board? Do you hear that, then we'll call this meeting adjourned, if you have a fourth or a fifth, yeah.